border. Good evening, everybody. There's a few mistakes made tonight. I just apologize. My first meeting I'm chairing, so bear with me. I've got my good friends all around the table here that can pitch in and help me out. Okay, first of all, we'd like to have the approval of the agenda. If there's any additions.
I'd like to make an addition.
Addition, yes?
A district community grant from the Eastern Department.
Any other additions?
Motion to accept the agenda.
Second.
Move then second it. All those in favor who say aye.
Aye.
Mary, right. Nay. Motion carried. Any conflict of interest declarations while we're at this point, at this line? If not, we'll move on. And we'll move on to a presentation by Stephen, sorry.
First mistake.
A first mistake. I know your brother too well, Tim. Works right next to us, yes. Tim Dowsett, he'll speak on the cap the light, save the night. You're on.
Thank you very much for having me here tonight, councillors. I appreciate having the time to speak to you tonight. So, it hasn't been long, but it's been four years since our Starlight certification came into effect in 2014. And since then, a number of things have happened. We've learned a little bit about understanding light. We've understand what it means to have a dark sky area. And we've learned the beauty of the night sky, which a lot of us take for granted. The situation at the moment is that in 2014, we got our certification. Following, we have proven, like I said, that by 2015, astrotourism has been proven that it can work. We've brought over 2,000 people at Deep Sky Eye alone, and that's not including any of the other businesses that decide to do anything starlight related. Our Starlight Festival brought in a lot of people over the years, the last couple of years. Unfortunately, there's still no laws governing lighting in our region. We need to create policies and bylaws in order to protect our night skies. Currently, in 2019, we're doing the recertification process for our Starlight certifications. That's been submitted. We're waiting a response. So, policies. A lighting policy is a good start, and it shows our municipality, how our municipality will implement lighting on a municipal level. So basically, that means anytime that municipality is building a building, like the new, like the new office that's being built, they will put proper lighting in there, and that's great. The challenge is, is that it's not legally binding for any of the residents, and it doesn't apply to residents, and it doesn't apply to businesses either. That's the problem, is that this is where most of the problem actually happens with lighting. But like I said, it's a good first start. It doesn't take long to implement, probably a couple of months, correct me if I'm wrong, but we could put a policy in place. Now, a bylaw. So, right now, there's no bylaw in Argyle governing lighting. The Nova Scotia Municipal Government Act shows that municipalities have the authority to create bylaws around nuisances. And I've quoted the section of the act there. Although lighting is not directly specified, I've been following up with the Royal Astronomical Society of Canada's Light Pollution Committee, and they assure me that it is very possible for us to incorporate a bylaw without any changes to that act. Other businesses and other municipalities have done it. And I actually have a spreadsheet that's like three pages long of all the places across Canada that have implemented policies and bylaws for lighting. And not all of them have lighting put in their municipal acts. So residential, this is just an example of a bylaw that could be implemented, and it can be this simple if it want, if we want it to be. "A residential commercial outdoor lighting should not shine beyond the owner's property or cast a shadow beyond the property line." If you stand on a property line and somebody has a light in their yard, you shouldn't be able to see your shadow on the other side. Very simple. Currently, we have a noise bylaw. We could add the word "lighting" into that bylaw. Another example is, an example here that I wrote, that was written out. "Being a bylaw to regulate outdoor illumination and control light pollution to ensure responsible light, light pollution abatement, conservation of natural areas, natural darkness required for the health of plants, animals, and humans, and the conservation of the heritage and enjoyment of the use of the night sky environment." And that's just a start. A lot of the towns, proper lighting is very simple and requires a full cutoff fixture type light. And actually, I didn't have the, I forgot to paste the picture in, but in New Brunswick, they have a new standard for dusted dawn lights, and they're actually very, very cool. They look great, they're, they, there's no light trespass. You don't see the light bulb when you're walking up to it until you get really like right under it. So that's something we could look at in the future because if we don't have any bylaws regarding light trespass, this is what happens. You get a neighbor next door who decides to put a light for security reasons. And it shines, this is the, this is a picture I took with my camera during the fog so I could see it, so you could see the effect of it. Over here, it's complete darkness. Over here, you can see the glow of the light. And it's, this is half a kilometer away. This is from my home. And the observatory is right here. So this is before the light was installed, and that's after. This is the view coming up the driveway to the observatory. It's blinding. This is a beautiful little park area that we created down by the river. You can see all these beautiful lights are full cutoff fixtures that, you know, just light up the path. All this lighting that you're seeing is light trespass coming into our area. And the sky bubble tents, people that have stayed in them were kind of disappointed in some cases because the light is refracting inside the lens of the, of the tents. So, there's our, another example there. There's our beautiful cottage, sky cottage with beautiful skylights, so you can see the area. Another example of before and after, just in the corner here, you can see the sky. It's difficult with the lights on, but. This is the view from the river to the cottage. All of this is now light pollution, or it used to be black. Ever see a business burned down to the ground? That's pretty much what it feels like. So there you go. If you have a light like that shining, like in your backyard, you would complain. Thank you very much.
Right on. That's your presentation, Tim?
Thank you.
Right on. Any questions that anybody would have to ask Tim or comment?
You say that light was there for, for security reasons. Is that the, is that the excuse, or is that the?
Yep, absolutely, yep. And we have contacted a lawyer, and we're in lawyer negotiations, so.
And without a bylaw, is there anything that can be done?
What will happen, I'm suspecting, if it doesn't change, I'm hoping it doesn't have to go to court. That's way too expensive. And we're hoping that it can be resolved, you know, off, you know, with the help of everybody. And there's a tort law in Nova Scotia, I guess, that is basically if somebody is doing something to basically reduce the enjoyment of your property, then it can be brought to court.
Tim, remind me again, how long has this light been put on?
One month.
One, one month now?
Yeah, about one month. They've, they've come numerous times to adjust it, making it, actually, I have photos and all of that, but that, that's a different story where the photos are showing it's actually making things worse. And actually, they came and did another adjustment today. We'll see where that goes. There is absolutely no reason for a light there, there never was. It's a thirty, you know, the property, the owner has been there for 30 years with no issues. We've never had any issues with them, and, but.
Right on.
Again, it comes down to having a bylaw, having the ability to control such things so that it doesn't happen. We've spent the last three years educating people on the proper use of lighting and how to, you know, how to properly light their, their areas. And some people have taken that very seriously, and others not so much.
Okay, yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, I'm sorry.
I have a question.
Yep.
I haven't heard, I mean, initially, I think it's a great idea. However, I may be pointing out some comments someday of why a bylaw like this shouldn't, sorry, why it shouldn't be implemented maybe all over the municipality. What about, just, I'm just thinking out loud here. If, in any area where stargazing is observed, or any, any company, or not-for-profit society, or any area where it's deemed an area where you would stargaze professionally, for lack of better terms, could you implement a bylaw maybe with a certain zone, two, three, four, five, whatever it may be? Is that a good idea?
And that's, that's, that's a, a better, not better, but it's a good idea. It all depends at what point that the municipality wants to, you know, control the light pollution for the night skies. In the last four years, we've noticed that it's been creeping into Quinnin a little bit more and a little bit more, which means, and actually, I've got readings to show that, and I put that in the document for the Starlight Foundation. So, it's, it's a challenge to just say, okay, it's, it's fine to say that you have a zone around the observatory, say 10, 10 kilometers, that there's, you know, this strict lighting is to be, you know, adopted, but if everybody around there is doing not that, and putting lights up everywhere, well, you're gonna end up with the same problem. So it's pretty much really, as least for southwest Nova. Now, you may have zones, say like along the shoreline, that you say, you know, you've, you know, fishermen or whatever need to have certain amount of lighting, but there's ways, there's proper ways to do that. There's proper ways to do lighting in every sense of the word, whether it be for a golf course, whether it be for, you know, fishing dock. There's proper ways to do it.
Yes, councillor Dr. Moore?
So, I guess the designation is, you said that it's under review every so many years, and it's coming up, you say?
Yeah, it was actually due last year, but we were delaying it a little bit. We had an extra six months there because of, you know, we were saying that we, we had started a bylaw, and we were putting things kind of, at least, we had, we wanted to show that we're trying to at least reduce the light pollution footprint that's happening. So that's why it's been a little bit late. It was submitted back in May, the documents and, and the fees paid through the municipality. And now we're just waiting back to, you know, get confirmation on, do we have another certification or don't we have a certification? There's been several, I mean, there's been a lot of money vested already, you know, right from the start. And, you know, I think it's, I mean, it's in, in, in the best interest of the, of all three municipalities, and, you know, in fact, of all of Nova Scotia, to be able to claim they have dark skies and people come from around the world, you know? We had our last group that, that came a couple of days, or last week, actually, when some folks stayed overnight. They were from exchange students that came from Wolfville, and they're actually from Turkey and Switzerland. And, you know, they stayed overnight, and the review, like, we got was like, holy, this is like one in a million place, and they were really excited. And kind of a good thing was that the full moon was out. So, you know, the light didn't exactly bother them, but they sent me a personal message afterwards saying, you know, we didn't see as much as we hoped through the sky bubble because of the light was flashing, but it was good, like, you know, so. It's something that will spread, and, you know, lots of potential for tourism too, I think. But we've shown it.
I guess the application was sent in before the light?
What's that? Yes, it was actually, yeah, yeah.
Councillor Dawson?
Yeah, to me, it sounds vindictive. Is it because like increase in traffic, more people, and some of the neighbors aren't so keen on all the tra, extra traffic you're attracting?
Actually, originally, there's a story behind there that I can't get into right now, but originally, when we decided to put the observatory there, we spoke with all the neighbors, and they were happy to have the observatory. And, you know, even when we decided to put a little park there, you know, is it, would everybody have any problems? Because we didn't wanna, you know, get anybody upset over that. Because it is a small community of, you know, retired people, and, you know, we, we were very quiet. We're like probably, it's probably the quietest business you've ever had, like as far as tourism. So, no one ever had a problem, so, yeah, there's a story behind there I can't get into at the moment.
CEO Muse?
Just a couple of things. So, so the, so Tim had approached us as municipal staff to ask about bylaw and policy. In fact, provided a lot of information for us. And the first thing we did was, was take that information and bring it to our solicitor. Our solicitor didn't feel like we had the authority to do a bylaw of this nature. What we can do, this is in interest of council, and I mean, it's right for Tim to come to council, I think. And, you know, if council is so inclined, we can get the, the province to actually take that position, which is, you know, clear, like, you know, to Tim's point, you know, if you, if you define light as a nuisance, it could potentially fall under a nuisance bylaw with all the enforceability required. That's a question of interpretation that, that may or may not go that way. But I think it's, if council's so inclined, it can do one of two things. It can say, well, why don't we get the province to take a position on this? Because it is their municipal government act, after all. In absence of that, we, as a council, if, again, if it was something you wish to preserve, is to request for that power if you don't think you have it. So, so if you, if you don't have that power and the province is willing to allow that to happen, then there may be, either they will interpret that you can, and if they interpret that you can't, you could request an amendment in order to allow that to happen. So, I don't know what that looks like yet. I can't describe that. I know that we could likely do a policy, because that's not, that's not, a policy is not an enforcement document. It's a, it's a document that, that provides guidance for people who are putting lights. And so we could go and say, look, you're not actually following our policy around lighting, and, and, and they would either make that change or they wouldn't. And we wouldn't have the enforceability component associated with that. So the issue is enforceability, as, as far as we understand, as staff from our legal counsel. So, in order for this to move in that bylaw mode, we're gonna need to step up our presence with the province, if this is something, if this is the will of council.
Yes.
If we were, if we were to, and I guess this is directed basically to our CAO, whether I can answer that or not. If we were to implement and, and put a bylaw in, pass it, what happens to the lights that are already there?
They would have to comply to the bylaw.
Right.
It's kind of like a noise bylaw.
There's no grandfather clause.
Yeah, there's, they, yeah, so it's like a noise bylaw. If you were making noise before, and there was no bylaw, and the noise bylaw was implemented, you'd have to adhere to the bylaw.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Yes. Councillor Yarman? Councillor Dawson?
If we put a bylaw in, would it be on the owners of the person that is offending? Challenge that bylaw? Because the part you're talking, we're talking much perhaps years.
Yeah, if the position of the provinces is that we can't, that it is not in our jurisdiction to do so, it could take some time. And so in the meantime, the policy would be the right decision until you could find another solution. If they disagree with the legal interpretation and say, look, under nuisance, if you want to call lighting a nuisance, you can, you know, fill your boots, then that's a process that would just, would be not much longer than a regular process to do a bylaw. So it would still require public hearing. It would require the public to make comment on what we would do. So it wouldn't just be, you know, you know, there might be, there might be people in the community that, that want more lighting. And so they may want to come and express their dismay towards us. Now, the good news is, is we have exactly four streetlights. So, in order to implement a, a lighting bylaw, we'd have to adhere to our own bylaw, right?
Right.
And, and that being said, having only four or five in our ownership, that wouldn't be too difficult. You know, the, the changes in the lighting are not that complicated. And Tim, I think, described that quite well, is the bylaws don't eliminate the use of lights.
Absolutely.
They just, they just.
Make use of the right.
Make use of the light in the right way so that it's not a, a pollution or a nuisance to, to your neighbor. So that's, you know, and so that process could, if we, if we get the go-ahead from the province, then it wouldn't take that long, because Tim has, has been excellent in providing us plenty of examples that we could use. Not that many in Nova Scotia, like zero. But, but there are other provinces that have it, that we could quickly find.
And if I may add.
Go ahead.
And the bylaw itself, you know, as far as enforcing bylaws like that, in, in a lot of cases, you know, this, these ten, these types of bylaws tend to be complaint-related, you know, bylaws. So if nobody complains about, you know, putting a light up, and it's kind of in, you know, in the wrong direction or whatever, and it's not bothering anybody, then it's, you know, the municipality wouldn't have to kind of go in and walk around with a whip and chain to, you know, enforce it, right? So, it's just a.
That would be as all our other bylaws are generally complaint-driven.
Yeah.
I just can't believe that somebody can put a million watt candle power spotlight from, from next door, shine it on your house, and you can't do nothing about it. I mean, it just blows, it blows my mind. Like, I live in Argyle Harbour where the boats come in from Lobstern at night. They have their big crab lights on, and it lights up the whole inside of your house. Like, I don't complain about it, because I, I chose to build there, and that's, the business is going on, right? It's shortly in there, I thought you were, and let's quote again, but I just can't believe somebody has authority to do that in this day and age. It just blows my mind, and we can do nothing about it.
I feel the same way. I want to do something, you know?
I know what they're doing, Wedgeport, just crab lights.
Yeah, I heard that one.
We will go there. Okay, there's no further, no further, oh, yes.
I'd just like to add that we've invested, municipality, local committees, you know, invested quite a bit of time and money on, you know, making this a dark sky area and stargazing as, you know, tourism product. You know, that we definitely need to do something about this, because, you know, anybody, you know, but the way it is now, anybody could just buy a light and flick it on whenever they want, right?
Defeats what we've been working on.
There you go.
Very good. Council will deal with this, whether today or the next meeting. Tim, you read, we have a little bit of time to think about it, and we come back.
Yeah, I have all, more information I can forward to you with examples from around the country, both on Canada Parks level, you know, Royal Astronomical Society of Canada, a whole bunch of them. They all have similar things, so.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Okay, we'll move on to, one item I had forgot was councillor Digganett sent his regrets. Just to be noted. Okay, we'll move on to the adoption of minutes. And before we go ahead, as you'll see, there's three special council and regular council meetings, minutes here on our number four in the agenda. And maybe so, the people out there listening, just so they'll know what's going on, before we go in to move these minutes adopted, I spoke to our CAO, and he kind of thought it'd be a good idea just to mention just what this is, these special council meetings, minutes were about. And it's about the resolution of council wanting to, Ms. Valia Vargal agrees that the proportion of operational and capital funding for the Mariner Centre expansion be expressed via written agreement and be based on a blended formula where our share would be 32.43%. The total would be 28.77, and municipality of District of Yarmouth, 38.8. This is, again, this is about the Mariner Centre expansion or proposed that we're looking at. The municipality of Argyle supports the funding application for the 40 million Mariner Centre expansion. The municipal portion being up to 30% of the project cost, up to $12 million regionally. So we share one-third, one-third, not one-third, the percentage I mentioned a few minutes ago, which is 32.43 of the 12 million, that's, if, if the project is $40 million. And we're not sure where that's gonna land yet. Once a funding application is approved by the provincial and federal government, the municipality of Argyle agrees to undertake a comprehensive public engagement process alongside its regional partners. So just to be sure for everybody out there, that they know that we're just agreeing to send the application in, we will have certainly undertake a very comprehensive public engagement before we move along and agree to any funding. The municipality of Argyle commits to open, respectful, and transparent engagement with its regional partners and stakeholders to the implementation of the expansion project. So I just like, so the people will know what these special meetings were about, we're transparent about what we're doing. And if there's any comments anybody would like to add before we prove the minutes on this expansion, you can do so now. But it's, it's a proposed 40 million, it could land, a 32 million, it could land, a 26 million, whatever. But certainly, we'll go to the public to be sure that they know what's going on, and that they'll be engaged in, in, in the discussion. Okay, we'll move on to the, I'm sorry, could you add anything?
No, I'm gonna drink it. No, that's, that's great. I think, I think just the people need to understand that right now it's on the application. We're, we're, we're looking at putting in an application. We're making commitments with our partners to put this, submit the application. We engage EXP consultants to, to assist us with a lot of the, mostly around the design and cost of a concept that we're putting together. The project size is really still unknown. It really is dependent on federal and provincial. We just want to put our best foot forward. So I think you described it as, as the discussion was, for sure.
Very good.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'd like to move over to the special council meeting of Thursday, June the 6th. Mover in the second there? All those in favor who signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, the special council meeting of Thursday, June the 13th. Moved in second, all those in favor who signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Special council meeting minutes of Thursday, June the 20th. Mover?
Move those?
Moved, the second there?
Second.
Second. All those in favor who signify by saying aye.
Aye.
By my name, motion carried. We have the Recreation, Argyle Recreation Commission AGM meeting minutes, Thursday, May the 23rd.
So moved, second.
Moved in seconded, all those in favor who signify by saying aye.
Aye.
By my name, motion carried. The Argyle Recreation Commission meeting of Thursday, May the 23rd.
So moved, second.
Moved in seconded, all those in favor who signify by saying aye.
Aye.
By my name, motion carried. Okay, we have acknowledgement of the wall solved architecture minutes, new building, municipal building. June 7th, 2019 progress report, we have a mover?
Just, just that we're acknowledging these. We're not accepting, we're not, there's no requirement to approve the minutes, but to acknowledge receipt.
Acknowledge the receipt of June the 7th, June the 14th, and June the 24th.
Acknowledge.
Yes, great, thank you. Business arising from the minutes, it says none here. I don't know if our CAO has anything to add on there on the bill?
Nothing that isn't, I believe, on the agenda. Could be wrong.
Nope, good. Strategic, number seven, strategic priority topics. There's no. Strategic, number seven strategic priority topics, there's none on there. Uh, we'll move to number eight for decision, tax exemption request for nonprofit, the Hubbers Point and Area Community Center. Uh, if we go to memo on the first page, I guess. This is about that, uh, the Hubbers Point, uh, community, area community center has a piece of property that, uh, they're developing into a, a little parking area. So I guess, uh, for them to be, they're, they're being taxed for it right now because it was on the tax roll and they're seeking exemption.
So they qualify for
Go ahead, yes, no problem.
They qualify for exemption, correct?
They do, they're nonprofit, they had purchased it from
I see you have a proposed motion here and the total sum is twenty-one dollars and eighty cents up. Haley, you can copy that motion, cause I'm making the motion.
I'm seconding it.
Move in seconded, discussion, questions been called, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Remind me. Uh, we have on the B, uh, La Socia de, de Museu, the Westport and Westport Nature Trail Committee. We have two attachments on that one. Just open that. And if I get this right, it seems that, uh, the, uh, application for funding somehow was missed, uh, was missed and it was our mistake. There's a couple of proposals on our agenda that says that we can, first of all, let me have a look here. First of all, they are requesting, the Westport Tuna Museum is requesting four thousand four hundred and eighty dollars. And the Westport Nature Trail Committee is requesting four thousand five hundred dollars. So in our budget, we have, according to this, we have seventy-five hundred dollars allocated for the fall portion of the grants to organizations, application. Council has also already approved fifty-one thousand seven hundred dollars in the spring grants organization. So I guess we have a couple of options we could look at if it's so, if the council is so interested in doing. They can either use that money that's a lot allocated for the fall portion. Or option two, that we can defer the approval till, till, till next year's, uh, or till, till the, to the fall grants organizations approval process. We have those two choices and, um,
We have two suggested choices.
Two, two, yes, two suggest.
You have
Twenty more.
Appreciate that.
You have, you have a variety of options.
Very good, thank you. Any discussion, yes, Council of Law.
Um, first off, accidents happen and this is, although it's in no way the museum or the trail committee's fault. You know, accidents happen and, and it's fine, we just have to rectify it one way or the other. Um, there's a couple of options, there's, there's, as you mentioned, there's other possibilities that we can look at. Uh, trying to amend, amend the situation, but I'm just thinking option one. Um, would like the effect what happens, especially with the trail committee, a lot of the action happens in the summer and whatnot. Um, so I actually like option two, although there, there's anything, there's endless possibilities we could do to rectify this. I would actually move that we approve a s, an exact same percentile of what we approved from last year, uh, from their requests. Uh, coming out of the fall, two thousand nineteen fall grants of organization budget.
Council of Law, you made that a motion?
Yes, I did.
Is there a co, a second or so we could
What would those numbers look like, yeah?
Uh, it was in our email, oh dear, what are they, so, they're right here. Yeah, um, so in two thousand seventeen, sorry, twenty eighteen. Yeah, all right, twenty eighteen, um, the Tuna Museum applied for forty-seven seventy-five and they received twenty-seven hundred. So that's slightly above fifty percent, I would say, I'm sure, I could whip up what it is pretty quick.
No, that's good.
And Westport Nature Trail Committee applied for five thousand and received twenty-nine hundred, again, probably around the sixty percent. So if they're requesting two thousand nineteen, forty-five hundred and basically forty-five hundred both, you're looking at roughly sixty percent of nine thousand. Fifty-six. Thank you, Haley.
Council of Law, I didn't quite understand your motion, you're suggesting
Could we have a second there on that, because, thank you, Kathy, I'm sorry.
You're suggesting we take it out of the fall grants for, budget for the fall grants? I totally supportive of what you're suggesting for the grants for the two organizations. But I would hate to see it come out of the fall grants because there's probably organizations out here that know they missed the spring grants. And probably waiting on applying for the fall. So I would like to find the money some, some administrative way.
I don't disagree and I would be, I, I wouldn't be opposed to that either, however, at the end of the day
If we don't use the seventy-five hundred in the fall, then put, put it back in the budget wherever it comes from.
So at the end of the day, you don't wanna penalize Robin Peter to pay Paul, right?
Sorry.
Absolutely.
Not, not one is a perfect solution.
So, so I guess what happened was that since these weren't in the mix, uh, all the other organizations that applied, probably got a little bit more money, right? Uh, which, there's nothing wrong with that.
No, no.
Uh, but again, uh, to take it from the fall, then, you know, it's probably a few, few organizations maybe that just plan to, to put their application in for the fall, right? And
Agree with you.
This would definitely, you know, I guess it would almost eliminate most of the money for the fall. So yeah, I, I agree with Council Johnson that if there's any way that we can, uh, do that, it'd probably be more, uh, I guess it would be a, a better way of, of solving the, the problem, if you wanna call it a problem.
The warning news.
Is there, where else could this money come from, what would we, what would we have to go into in order to do that? Cause I agree, I, I, that would almost wipe out our seventy-five hundred.
That's right.
And I think it's not fair to anybody, some people wait for the fall.
But it's gonna wipe out something else too, right?
Exactly.
Yeah. It's a mix.
For example, F C M's over, is there anybody left in that budget?
Uh, it's possible. Um, I mean, there's always, uh, areas where we would, we can reallocate, particularly when you're talking about a total of five thousand one hundred and forty dollars. Which if, if we're taking the motion that Councilor LeBlanc suggested, we would take fifty-six and percent-ish of the request for the Tuna Museum and fifty-eight percent of the Nature Trail. It would be two thousand five hundred and thirty for the Tuna Museum and twenty-six ten for the Nature Trail. So, um, there are a variety of areas that that may come out of. Um, if, if the motion says out of the, um, uh, fall grants to organizations budget, if that is not the intention of council, then that probably should be denied. Um, and then the new motion could include those two amounts for each of the organizations. And you can, you can give direction to either take it out of current year surpluses if they exist. And if not, it could come out of your operating reserve, because you did have a surplus from the prior year that you could apply. And that's your options.
That's right.
Fun with either, it's just, it's gotta come from somewhere and, and it's not, it's not fun to take it from either.
No.
Right.
So should we go and rescind them or vote, vote on the motion that's on the floor and, you know, vote if, if that's not the wish, but they want, then make another motion?
Yes, that would be my suggestion to you.
So do, are we clear on what we're voting for or against now, right? All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye, contrary, remind me, nay?
Nay.
Motion denied.
All right, make another one.
Okay, who's quick with this stuff?
Council of Law, can you put that in?
So
Need some help from that maybe?
I'll as God exact numbers there at least, I don't have to name percentile.
No, you don't, uh, yeah, here, here are
And we state it comes out of which fund, just the general.
General operation budget.
If there's, yeah, and in absence of any room can come out of operating reserve. At this point, it's likely that it will be the first one.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, uh, so I'll make a motion that we allocate twenty-five hundred and thirty dollars to the Westport Tuna Museum under, uh, as, as a grant, as well as twenty-six ten to the Westport Trail Committee, um, come out of the general operating fund. However, if there's room, uh, on any other budget, it may come out of there.
Second.
Moved in seconded, any questions?
Question?
Question's been called, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Remind me, nay, motion carried, thank you. Uh, okay, H C, uh, request for decision, decision, road tender. Okay, and that is quite a, quite a piece of cake. Maybe I'll get our C A O to, uh, if he wouldn't mind to go onto this, I have certainly read it, but I'll leave, give you the floor on this one.
Okay, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair, Deputy Warden. Uh, so the road, it's, it's called road tender, it is, it is to ask permission to proceed, uh, with a public road tender. So just to give the high level, um, at the couns, at the, the council budget meeting, the capital reserve was approved for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be invested in a public road, which just so happens to be on our property for the administration building. The road is going to be about paved, paved for about approximately a hundred meters coming into the property and then turn into, uh, dirt as it gets, as it extends beyond our requirement to do, uh, uh, our requirement, uh, for the municipal administration building. The, the report, uh, goes through a lot of details, uh, it is, was prepared, uh, quite well, I might add, by our public works department. And what they outline is first that we engaged Able Engineering and, which is the same engineering firm that Wild Salt is using as a subcontract. Uh, seeing as the work is likely to coordinate with some of the first phase of our, uh, property construction or admin building construction. Uh, it made sense to coordinate that using the same firm. Uh, it, so it was a, a small job that they, that they were engaged to, to do a detailed design of this public road. The public road itself is not complex, uh, what was required was a, um, we had to get, uh, topographic and other information around, around what the, the status of the property is that's included in the report. And there's basically the question, or the, the question that's being asked of council to consider is to give the go-ahead for the, for the type of, of project that they are recommending. So what they are recommending is a two-phased approach. Um, the property is quite long, as you know, it goes about four, it's about fourteen acres in total. Uh, we use about two to three acres for our own purposes. Uh, the road will, the road is pre-designed and as required by subdivision. So we don't have to construct the road all the way to the end of the property, but we have to show what that would look like in the case that we would do that. Uh, and that's, and that's to ensure that the, uh, that the engineering of the road and, and the lots that are being proposed, um, are appropriate. So when we do these kinds of, others that put roads in also have to do this when there is a subdivision required. So there will be a subdivision required. It may or may not look exactly the way that's being proposed in this report. What will be done is the road will go approximately three hundred meters into the property. And, uh, will then stop at that point. And it will allow for the development of, uh, potentially residential. Uh, but specifically, we have two properties earmarked for affordable and alternative housing. So we're, this is right in your priority. So this is one of your priorities this year is to develop, is to ax, provide access to this land. And then we will then go out to R F P and request, uh, organizations that will be interested in utilizing, purchasing a portion of that land for that purpose. This project does not con, it contemplates multiple properties. The, the, the first section of the development has approximately, uh, I think it's three, might be two. I'm having trouble seeing my, my own report here, it's very small. Uh, here it is. Right, so it looks to be between three and four lots and one or two alternative housing lot opportunities. So if you see in the report on page five, there is a line that is drawn in, in the report. That line approximately represents the phase one of the project.
Okay, I did know.
So, uh, that will allow for that public road to connect to a private driveway and will allow for those properties to the, well, it looks like to the south, it is the south, hey, how's that? I had to think about it, it is to the south of the road. Uh, it will allow for those properties to be utilized for alternative and affordable housing. And as you see beyond that line, there's quite a few residential lots that are being proposed. So it may or may not look like that in phase two. So what is being proposed is let's, let's bring the public road to the point where we know the public housing can be developed. And then let's, uh, take a look at the, the market interest for the properties. Keeping in mind that this public road is in a mixed-use zone, which means that you can have commercial institutional, you can have residential, you cannot have light or heavy industry. So it's, it's similar to the rest of Tuscan essentially. Uh, so the, the zoning itself is not, it's not specific to business, it's not spec, it's, it actually supports more residential than anything. So the cost of the first phase is listed here, the estimated cost. And that is, um, just pulling it up here now. All right, so it's, the estimate is between, uh, two, two hundred and twenty-five and two hundred and forty thousand dollars. So that is within our budget, um, and that would, it would be what we would recommend. Now, our budget does not contemplate any sale of land. So any sale of land will be a surplus to our budget at this time, okay? Um, we didn't anticipate that we would sell any properties in, in the, in this fiscal year, but we might be surprised. Uh, I would say that the front end of the phase one, it does show that there are three or four residential lots. Those could easily be for commercial use. As you know, there has been some thinking around the possibility of, of earmarking that section for commercial growth. Because there's actually, it would be very specific, it would be institutional, it could be things like, um, you know, in an accounting firm or, it would be something fairly passive around, around the type of use. And, um, um, and would, would, would potentially be a location for that. Might be attractive for a business to, to invest there. So that is a very long summary of a much longer report. Um, so the recommendations are on the back. And the recommendations have been influenced by three primary things. One is that we have, uh, an economic development strategy that focuses on Tuscan, uh, having, uh, some central development around housing and other developments. Public housing has been selected as a priority of, of council for the current year, so we're consistent with your priorities. And, uh, we've already got the budget for it, so I'm not asking for something new, we're asking just to, to give, uh, the go-ahead for phase one. And so, uh, I, I did put a, a link for your information around what the N P S regulations allow in the zoning. Um, if council had any concerns about the zoning, uh, we really, we can raise that at a future time. It doesn't, it doesn't have to stop the, 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 the business of putting in a public, uh, road. So, uh, if, if there was a feeling that you just wanted to do it residential, or if you, you wanted to strictly do a certain thing, then, you know, we'd have to make changes to the bylaw to accommodate that.
Any questions or, or, sorry, C A O, you
Really, just, just to, just to be clear, what we're asking for is the go-ahead for phase one of the construction, that's what we're looking for. And so we can go to tender for that.
Uh, I see there's a, the, the amount, the amount that you said, that there's a sidewalk that would be put in there.
That is still up for discussion, it's, it's a, um, it's a, it's not a paved sidewalk, it would be just a dirt. Or, uh, gravel, gravel.
Cement or something.
No, it's a
I think it's a great idea.
Just like a trail.
It's, it's a bit, yes, it allows for, uh, a safer, uh, walkability, that may or may not be part of the final not be part of the final tender, we, we may tender it out, at the end of the day, we may not, we may decide against it, that would not be an area that would have a lot of traffic necessarily, so it may not justify that expense, um, but, um, it is there for your consideration. It's not expensive.
No, I was looking, I was surprised when I saw 11,008, I wondered.
Considering, it's, yeah, but, but there would be more maintenance on a gravel, a gravel sidewalk than there would be concrete otherwise.
Okay, any questions? Questions you'd like to, if not, we'd certainly entertain a motion, if it's a wish of council.
I would move that we go ahead with phase one, tender for the, it, it, at this point, it's tender for the road.
Public.
Basic, public road.
Yeah, so, so this, so just so that we're clear, it's also includes the wastewater.
Right.
The cost includes the wastewater.
To, to do that as well. So, that's my motion.
Been moved and seconded, any questions? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary my name, motion carried. Okay, for correspondence and information, we have the, I have, Yasta board member, Councilor Dantone, CEO Muse, is there something that there's no addition, there's just?
Councilor Dantone's here.
I'm sorry, I didn't read the order.
I, I brought this to the agenda.
Sorry about that.
Right now, uh, on the Yasta board, we have a vacancy since Roger Dantone stepped down, and we had previously talked about, uh, of putting, uh, Richard Lora, who's the new manager at the Village, so I spoke with him today and he's, he's on board, so if we need a motion from council to, to approve it, so I make a motion that we approve Richard Lora as the, the new, uh, member for Yasta for Argyle.
I'll second the motion.
So it's been moved and seconded, that Yasta board member, Richard Lora.
Lora.
Lora. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary my name, motion carried. Uh, next B is the Municipal Physical Activity Leadership Program, and this is for your, for your reading pleasure, information. Uh, C, we have a declaration of climate change, attachment 13 pages, I didn't read every page, but I did look at it, and, uh, I don't believe we have anything to do there from what I could, I could read, I mean, if we have to make a motion or anything like that, I, it just says for correspondence and information. Uh, under D, we have Joint Municipal Fire Service Committee information bulletin, attachment one page, we have the Western Counties Regional Library, the minutes, and we have a thank you letter from the Junior Achievement of Nova Scotia, which we had given, uh, an amount of money to. So that's for all your reading pleasure. Moving on to number 10, uh, we have, uh, two financial requests. The first one, uh, is a district community grant, Eibar River Schoolhouse Society, Ward and Muse.
I'll move that we, uh, grant $500 to the Eibar River Schoolhouse Society.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
My name, motion carried. The next grant is a district committee grant, $500 for the Ami de Muse, Councilor Dickton had that.
I'll make that a motion.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Contrary my name, motion carried. And we have number three, added on, East Publical Fire Department.
Yeah, uh, East Publical Fire Department's requesting to, they, they need some gravel to put around their hydrants, and I'm going to, that'd be giving $500.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
My name, motion carried. And the agenda, or those of motion from councils, our next meeting?
The, the one thing that, that is not on the agenda, but we, we should look at it, is, uh, don't we make a motion at this meeting for, for, for our summer?
Meeting.
Oh.
Summer meetings or non-meetings?
I'll make a motion, we defer our regular council meetings in July and August, with the exception that we, if we need to call a meeting for emergency purposes, we sell away.
Second.
In order and seconded, uh, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
My name, motion carried.
Should we deal with the tendu set issue now?
Should we deal with that now?
Humane as council, I mean, I think, I think from, from staff's perspective, we would require some form of direction, and if, if you, you don't want to wait, if you want us to make, take action.
That's right, yeah. Cause we're not gonna meet until September, I think we should deal with that.
Right, great.
So we need a motion, is that what we need to?
Motion to direct staff?
Direct staff to what, is it engage the province, is that what we're looking at doing, what, what's our next step?
Loses by law.
Yes, it, I, my suggestion to you would be to pass a motion, uh, to instruct the CAO to provide you, uh, to, to ask the province of Nova Scotia for an interpretation
Okay.
of, of, uh, our powers under MGA regarding light restriction, lighting restriction,
Yeah.
and that we report that back to your, to you, once we know.
Did you make that a motion?
Yes, I just did what he just said.
Second.
Second, can move to second?
On the question, on the question, our, our solicitor, his legal opinion was that we can't draft our own body law.
Uh, he felt that enforceability would be an issue, uh.
And he didn't say we could draft it?
Uh, I, I would have to go back to exactly the wording that he used, I think that he didn't, what he saw was that the MGA didn't specifically allow it, and, which is true, um, you know, if, if, there's always a matter of interpretation that might differ from, from what our solicitor's indicated, so, um, you know, I respect the opinion of our solicitor, which is why we went back to Tim and said, look, um, we don't have enforceability around this, um, however, it doesn't hurt to go and get a provincial, because the, it's the province that's gonna give us a problem if we can't enforce it, it's not gonna be, right? It's if the, you know, even if our solicitor said you could, and the province said you can't, the province is kind of the boss, so, uh, really coming from them would be, uh, wiser, and, and plus, we'll frame it in the sense that, you know, could it be considered a nuisance, and if so, then we already know.
It's just, I feel his frustration and it's just.
Yep.
I agree.
It's just the wheels of government, especially when you're dealing with two levels, you're gonna, you're rolling on and on.
I know, I'm concerned with that.
Just, I would like to see a quick fix to list one somehow.
Agreed.
So this has been a business that has proven to bring a lot of people.
It was written up in the National Geographics for God's sake.
Absolutely.
Exactly.
Here we have a neighbor blasting a light in his face, I mean, come on, get real people.
Please. I don't return.
Have to shed light on the situation.
They're shedding light already.
Sorry, that was too much.
Somebody who likes the stargates.
Right, I would really.
That's happened before too. Anyhow, let's move on, a motion, you're.
Question?
Yeah.
Question?
A question, question's been called, although in favor.
Aye.
Contra my name, motion carried. Question period. Have anybody, Gary or Eric, anything that you've got?
Sure do, well.
Okay, uh, we're, number 13, we're gonna go into camera, we have a motion.
Go to camera.
Camera, seconded.
Yes.
That's it, although in favor, signify by saying aye.